The stage is set, the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate, we stand, who will lead this farmland? Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Words are weapons, wield the throne debates get heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows linger, truth or spin, the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Words are weapons, wield the throne debates get heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows linger, truth or spin, the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. The stage is set, the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate, we stand, who will lead this farmland? Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Words are weapons, wield the throne debates get heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows linger, truth or spin, the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Words are weapons, wield the throne debates get heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows linger, truth or spin, the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. The stage is set, the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate, we stand, who will lead this farmland? Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Words are weapons, wield the throne debates get heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows linger, truth or spin, the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025? We'll see.
And good evening everybody. Tonight, these candidates are vying to try and get my vote on who to be elected on the Paikawakawa Southern Ward for the 2025 local body elections. But there is one thing stepping in the way, and that's not just mine, but your vote as well. Hey, coming here live from Tefaya. Benanon is also, is the National Drama School. We're here with It's in the Ballot. And tonight, I do have a conflict of interest I have to declare. I get to vote for these candidates. So when it comes to this election, I'm a little bit more invested in this one than I'd normally be in an It's in the Ballot show. But that's not going to sit there and stop me from asking the tough questions and getting the candidates to answer the tough questions. And beware, none of them have sat there and bribed me. And I'm pretty sure they're all supporters of having an independent commissioner against corruption. So, you know, they won't be sitting there getting bribed me for any not so tough questions. How are our candidates feeling tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so let's get up first with opening statements. And Paula, you get to start off with your one minute opening statement.
Oh, okay.
Makes it easier for Nick.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Paula Mulo. I'm born and bred in Island Bay. I'm of Italian heritage and I'm very passionate about our communities and our city. I've been involved in a number of projects over the years with Wellington Tourism, absolutely positively Wellington. And I'm here to stand as your representative in the Southern Ward. My family, I'm Italian heritage, so they've instilled in me the values of integrity, honesty, transparency, hardworking ethics and business acumen. And that's what I feel like my expertise I can bring to the table. I'm currently working at Harcourt's as a real estate agent. And I negotiate and listen to people every day about how unaffordable Wellington is and how, what can we do to help? And listening to, you know, so many people so up in arms this time round more than ever about what's actually happening in the city at the moment. So we do have a number of issues to address. And I would love to be part of a group of wonderful people that we can address them together and act in your good faith and as transparent and as consulting you and the group of people that we need to, you need to entrust and us to do the job that's best for you as a city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, Paula. Next up, Nuredon.
Kirota Tokatoa, my name is Nuredon Abdurrahman. Three years ago, I was sitting here some, and I told you guys three things. One, where I came from, what I really care about. And two, why I joined the Labour Party. Three, if you elect me, what I will do. Today, I'm going to report back what I have been doing over the last three years. I'm also going to tell you a bit of my story for those of you who haven't heard previously. Three, if you vote for me, what I will do in going forward. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, Kevin. Your one minute opening statement on why you should become one of the next two Paikawakawa Southern Ward councillors.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zing. I'm a hundred percent independent for the candidate. I'm standing for the business environment. So this is what I feel in the business environment is getting worse than before. I born in China, northwestern China, Langdru City, near Mongolia. My parents are both scientists. So before I come to New Zealand, I got to educate. One is machinery, one is biology, but I'm a technician of some science institute. Thirty years ago, I worked in the Meramoun factory, Interlock. Maybe lots of people know that. It's a big manufacturer, but due to the environment, the Interlock are more out. So the business is more out, so five hundred people more than lost their job. And the family, five hundred, more than five hundred family got to suffer. So now I'm running Wellington, Newtown Retail Shop, Rainbow Bridge, and running the Wellington-based Chinese community newspaper. And I'm also Wellington Chinese Community Group leader as well. So I really want Wellington business environment getting improved and stop spending too much money for the nothing. Thank you.
Okay, and we've got Don. Your opening statements of why you should be the next councillor for Paikawakawa Southern Ward.
Hello, Donald McDonald, Don Newt for Mayor in Southern Ward. I expand that. McDonald waiting, second coming. They only give me one minute, they only give me one minute. Must white terms Jesus, Passover, protection, blast, great disaster. The sun will not always rise. The sun envelop earth and wars sooner than we think. My special policy is calendar is so stupid. Child easy, King's Birthday, Labour, Christmas, five weeks times six days. I say no Thursday forever. Thirty days times eleven months, but December thirty-sixth. Year, three hundred sixty-five and a quarter. Rather, three hundred and sixty-six minus six days every eighth year, one week. Six, one hundred percent Gregorian. All months, Sunday the first. Saturday, six times, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four and so on. The current calendar cannot guess third Monday or next month. That's not good. New calendar, all months repeat, days of the week. Simplicity, simplicity, authorise. Eight forty-five, nine hundred, four to nine. Now, my time is up surely. We're getting about five minutes, so I should carry on, I should carry on. Good to see my friends here and some new candidates. And the thing is, do they do the job? No, they don't do the job. They say it's been resolved, but no, they do nothing, they do nothing. And that's not up to it, that's not fair enough, that's not fair enough. Now, I'm going on for my six minute now, but the timer is not very accurate. And this is the dance and drama. And nearby, you've got Hanson Court Flats and the buses and the hospital.
Gee, you definitely don't know how to stick to a timer there, Don.
Well, you're not stopping me, are you? You're going to stop me?
Stop.
Yeah. Gee, yes, you need to sit down there and I've got to figure out and remember which mic do I turn off when he keeps talking? And Don, don't make me be, you be the first person for me to do that because I've never done that on an It's in the Ballot show yet, turn off someone's mic. Okay, so we get up to the first stage here. So this is the stage where we get box questions. Now, we're doing a bit of a, what you call economised downsides here. I'm playing the role tonight of both Selwyn Too Good and Tenaka Kabushia. And I've got my trusty dusty box with twenty-eight questions in it. However, the candidates will still pick out box numbers between one and twenty-eight. Along with that, each candidate gets two metaphorical button cards. So if you want to button, put your hand up and we will sit down there. When the original candidate finishes the question, you can button and put in your answer afterwards. As I say, they're polite buttons, they're not doing point of order interruptions. And if you get a question you do not want to answer, you can use your defer card. And feel free to defer it to a candidate that is preferably here. But hey, you could always be cheeky and do it to one that's not here. And we'll see, I mean, one of them, I could probably ring up on the phone and they'll answer, you know? So hey, that's something in there, but I'm not sure if Laurie wants a phone call from me tonight. Okay, so let's get to our random order sheet here where we will kick off computers. Okay, my random order sheet, we will get a new list order. And Don, you get to go first, what box number?
I should go for number one.
Number one, and for those at home, Don didn't use his mic, so number one. Remember, the microphone is the very crucial bit for the audience members at home.
Number one, Donald.
Okay, okay. So we've got A for Alpha. What political party are you linked to?
Now, my party, McDon, waiting, second coming, Jesus, we must be on right terms, and Passover, and straight talk, plain speech. So there you have it. It's not a political party. You know, my affiliation used to be Our Truth, The Whole Truth, was a pack of eyes. That's the post for you. So this time, it used to be McDon Newt. Now it's McDon Waiting, which is the same letters. So that's my answer, that's my affiliation, you've got to have a good one.
Okay, Kevin, what box number would you like?
I'm number eight.
Number eight. And feel free, you can also use today in Maori to do it as well. And I'll probably remember what the numbers are. Okay, we got Q for Queen. Yes, and then Elizabeth the second on top of it, so that we can sit there and say the best queen we've ever had in modern day history. And we can't call it much because it's pretty much the only one we know. Okay, should Wellington start curb side food waste collection?
It's a Q, yeah?
Q, yes.
Okay. Now, I think so will be educate the people more after the food, the rubbish from the recycle, like plastic, with the separate with the rubbish, with the plastic and cardboard, paper. There's, and I mentioned, we are Wellington, especially for the plastic recycle, it's not so good. Because when you go to Happy Valley, it's not many rubbish bin you can put a plastic recycle. Because I heard if we do the recycle, government need to build up the factory to treat for this plastic. So that means plastic, the rubbish and the recycle, it's not good to recycle for the Wellington or the whole Wellington and New Zealand. Because they send to overseas, no overseas country to like a plastic recycle, only for cardboard and paper. So I suggest central government organise the whole, New Zealand local government, the city contribute together, build up a good recycle manufacturing, take whole countrywide plastic, contribute in one factory to a good trail and to recycle. Otherwise, we send to overseas, no people, no country want less rubbish, yeah. But better for, so you go to the Happy Valley, all the plastic rubbish put in the landfill. This is not good. And the paper, cardboard, it's very value, rubbish, lots overseas country.
Your time has expired. Yeah, well and truly, yeah. All good, all good. Okay, Paula, what box number?
Okay, I'll go for box number ten.
Box number ten. Okay, we've got F for Foxtrot. What will your top priority, top priorities if elected? Sorry, when Paula's finished.
So what am I, sorry, top?
What will be your top priorities if elected?
Okay, my top priority if elected will be to get the spending under control. I think instead of ideological projects, we need to focus on our core services and fix these because we've got some serious problems. I mean, I was walking around Island Bay the other day and we sort of got leaks everywhere. And you can see the moss coming off them, so they've been there for a long time. So, you know, it's the usual things, core focus. You don't build a house without laying the foundation and the pipes. So like Thorne and Key, you know, you put the piping on, then you build, okay, they did a cycle way and then they ripped it up again. So we want to get spending under control. And we don't want to be all these budget blowouts, we need to sort those out. And we have to focus and rebudget, you know, reprioritise our budget. And obviously Wellington is no longer affordable with our rates. So we need to get the rates under control. And to do that, we need to prioritise where our spend is. So mine is core projects, focusing on consultation with the public and being transparent and listening to the voices of our communities. Thank you.
And we have button from Don.
Your biggest priority, bring in a simple calendar. This is social organisation. Because you always miss your meeting because you don't know what day of the week the meeting is going to be on. And from one month to the next, it's all chaos. So this simple calendar is going to be thirty days times twelve months, five weeks of six days. Now thirty and December's thirty-sixth. Every month, Sunday the first. That's the way that it's going to follow. Sunday the first and Saturday is going to be six times twelve, eighteen, twenty-four and so on. And no Thursday. And the year is three hundred and sixty-six. Every eighth year, take off one week of six days. This is much simpler than the children's calendar. It's called, well, it's called Gregorian. It's a silly rhyme, thirty, thirty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. It's a silly rhyme. It's a hopeless and it's always been hopeless. So this is my calendar. And then you'll know where we have to go at the right time. And the phone, the phone, you'll have talk, text and data. Because without data, you can't check the time, you can't check the bus, you can't check.
Your time's expired.
My time is up, thank you.
That's all right, and by the sounds of it, is the four day working week's going to be introduced at the same time. Nuredon, what box number?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, we've got L for Lima. What is your plans to repair Wellington's failing pipes and drains?
Well, I think that our infrastructure is broken and the reason is money. One, people just keep talking for many, many years about not raising rates. And now it's coming back to hunt our communities. The second issue is the local government funding model is broken. So we need to look at it, how we can fund and address this failing infrastructure. If we continue with the current trajectory, it will take about six hundred and sixty years. And throughout the country, I think it's more than one hundred billion cost wise. So I think it needs to be a big focus for our city. And how we're going to fund it should be a combination of things, including the central government getting involved.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, we've got four questions down and we've got a new list order. Kevin, you get to go first, what box number?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. We are H for Hotel. What will you keep, how, start again. How will you keep services within budget without more rate hikes?
Number H.
H, yes. How will you keep, sorry. I have a feeling, I have made, sorry. I have a feeling, I have, I love the graphics and I've got the wrong stream, wrong camera. H is actually meant to be what services or luxuries would you cut to keep spending within budget? Oh God, that's a very similar question, but not the same.
Okay, for the recently, our New Zealand economy getting worse than before. I think it's all the budget, so everyone in business or government, the budget is very tough. So I think on some projects should be stopped, like a city town hall, like a Golden Road. I think they should be stopped until the business recover and getting better. And we do some of these sort of big project. This is my question, this is my answer, yeah.
And we've got Don using his second button very quickly.
Good oh, the services. The question is, do the jobs and the fixes sign off by a senior? And they lose their job when they sign off false, because they sign off false. And the council doesn't do it, the council doesn't do it. It's not honest. They ignore the job and they say resolve. But what they do, they did secret, they didn't answer the question. It's not a game. They want a five million dollar house and no rates. Vote on, I vote on the absolutes. Half population, half population. If it's a choice or a chance, optional, save, save dollars. Too many cars and potholes. Well, there's similar answers. See, I ran them together.
That's all good.
All good.
Now, now, Don, you get to go next, what box number?
Two or three or four, the lowest.
Oh, we've got number two then, so. Okay, we have X for X-ray. How will you, no, what will you do to encourage more housing development and affordability?
Okay, housing development and affordability, why do you want to develop houses? There's plenty of houses, there's too many people. Get rid of half the people, there's plenty of free houses. There's many mansions in the father's house. Less people, population, too many cars and too much noise? I'm shouting, be a bit softer. And too many planes. We don't want an airport, the planes are going nowhere. There'll be a pandemic and people will stay at home and the cars won't drive. Now, house, one million, two million, Candala, poverty, greedy me, the rents. I don't know that language, I should think so. Short stay rental homes, yeah, I don't know that language.
And Paula, what box number? And how many two million dollar houses are you selling in Candala?
Well, that's right, there's quite a few now. Box number, I'll stay close to my ten, so we'll go number eleven.
No problem.
Two ones, Don, what is that? Give me the numbers.
Okay, so we've got S for Saera. Oh, you're going to love this one.
Oh, am I?
Do you commit to promoting, protecting, maintaining and completing cycleways?
Well, I believe everybody has the right to choose the way they want to commute around the city. However, I do have issues with designs, poor design. And I have seen a number of people be bowled over, actually physically, in the last three months alone with the humps, the cycleways, trying to get out of the cars. And, you know, so personally, I think we've got, we've actually, they've done well with the trying to get people commuting bike, you know, cycling and things like that, that's fine. But I personally believe our spend, we need to prioritise the money. We don't have enough money, our debts are increasing. We've gone from up to one point eight, they're saying two point two billion by June next year. So we need to get a lot of debt reduction under control. I do agree with Nuredon's ideas about central government. I do agree with, and Neuriden says about central government, we've been underfunded for decades and we need central government involvement. So there's that, that we, that's a core thing, we need to focus on that too and they need to come to the party. And, but I do believe we've got this infrastructure, we need to focus on our core services and we need to, we need to spend wisely, otherwise if we carry on thinking we're going to spend 100 million here, 200 million there, and we don't have money for the necessities, we've got a bigger problem than ever. Thank you.
Okay, Neuriden, what box number?
Uh, 12.
12. Okay, we've got B for Brava. Integrity is vital in leadership. As a councillor, is it ever appropriate to gossip, spread rumours or leak information?
Not at all. I think it's really important, um, as a city leader's councillor should behave in highest and modest way. That means the integrity, the way they display in the community reflects the community they live in, the leadership, the type of leadership they want to, uh, follow as well. So I think rumours has no space, no place in our city. And I think we can do in a better way the way we do things. And, um, yeah, I think, no.
Could I elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, you can put a button there, yeah.
So I think, you know, as a city council, we should concentrate on what unites us and not what divides us. So, you know, integrity is one of the core values you'd think a councillor should uphold. You know, representing the people of Wellington. We're given a position to actually take charge and you're putting, entrusting us to do a job on behalf of the city and the constituents of the city. So I believe that we need to focus and work together as a team. The council needs to work as a team, um, just like in a company, you know, not the division, but the unification of people. And you get better outcomes working in that way as well. Thank you.
Just to, to, to finish it off, I think it's extremely disheartening to see. And I have my own political differences with Mayor Fano, but the way she was treated, this triennium, it's just unbelievable. It's not something that we expect. We can have a political differences, but treating our women leadership and in the leadership in such a way is unacceptable, is something that we should be calling out. And that is what I will do in this election everywhere I go. And we can have differences, but rumours, gossips, unnecessary things is not something that we expect from our leadership.
Okay, eight questions down and we've got a new list order. Dawn, what box number?
Shall we try three or four, the lowest number?
We can do number three. Okay, we've got D for Delta. Should Wellington abolish wards and elect all councillors at large?
My answer there, um, maybe, keep the wards. The council doesn't do the fixes. That's the councillor's job to do the fixes. And the answer, they've got to get, they've got to get a straight answer. No council answer or mumble on the phone, mumble on the phone. You ring, you ring them and you can't understand what they're saying. And then after one minute, it stops recording and you carry on talking. So the wards, we should keep the wards because otherwise you'll have all the councillors from one place. So, um. Vote on the absolutes, half the population, not choices, chance, optional, save dollars. Yes.
Thanks for mentioning that, Dawn. We, in the 20th century, was it Wellington had their first pro minister elected south of the Basin Reserve well before they had their first councillor elected south of the Basin Reserve. And that pro minister was Peter Fraser in the 1940s, who was MP for Brooklyn. Whereas it wasn't until we introduced wards in 1986, we finally got a councillor elected who lived south of the Basin Reserve. Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, Neuriden, what box number?
I'm a father of three, I already say seven, 12, and my other one is 15, so that's the age of my kids.
So right, 15 was the driver's licence age at one stage, not anymore. Okay, R for Romeo. Will you support free public transport for students, under 25s, community service cardholders and total mobility cardholders?
Absolutely. I think it should be, it's, it's, it's crazy. We live in such a very developed country and we have a society that's really struggling with affordability. And we also want to make it easy and accessible for our community to travel from one place to another. But, but not by increasing the public transport fees. I think making it fair, making it cheaper, making it free finally for everyone at some stage. It's something that I, I'm keen to see. And, um, actually, if I can chip in as well, there was an amendment that I passed when the Newtown and Berham poor, um, parking, uh, residence parking, uh, motion came forward. That was to make it 50% off for community cardholders and free for mobility cardholders. And we need to work through the details because of some of the legislation with the central government. But I think we should always make it easy for our community, transport is one of them.
And you're certainly right about this, especially with the total mobility ones, because on the public road, it's not easy to get a disabled car park. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, chuck, chuck a button. Ready?
Yeah. My opinion, yeah, okay, my opinion is, uh, for the, for the business people, for people for working in the government, for the company, that for the pick time, they are, it should be keeping the cost. But I support, uh, so after pick time, so all student and senior people and the, uh, another group of people, it can be free, but I still think for pick time, still need a chart for the, for the people. Thank you.
Sounds like you just described the gold card system.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Paula, what box number?
Okay, I'll go for box number 17.
Okay. Good old age, you can join the army but can't get deployed overseas. Okay, we got O for October. Do you support implementing safer school speed limits?
Well, yeah, exactly. So yes, I do support that because I think around those areas, we have seen, seen a number of incidents, incidences, I should say, that have occurred, you know, that, that have been proven to be fatal. And I think, you know, we need to be mindful, they are children and they do run out. And in those areas, I do think we need to have a slower speed around schools and those facilities. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, what box number?
28?
Yes, we've got 28. First person to choose something in the twenties. And we've got A B for the All Blacks.
What's, what's that?
Uh, A B. Yep, A B, so it'll be the one just above the hard hitting questions. Do you think Wellington City Council should proceed with the $160 million Gold Mile project as approved or revisit it with businesses?
I, uh, I think it should be stopped, this project. I still, I still think at the moment, whole economy, for whole Wellington and the country, this economy is very bad. So we need to very, very careful the balance for your budget, for your finance position. You, you only can spend the money for some, uh, for like a water pipe or this sort of instruction, for the important maintenance job for the, I don't think it's for the, for this project. This job should be, this project should be lived for the economy recover. Yeah, that's my question.
Could I, could I actually second that? Sorry.
You chuck enough buttons, it's fine.
Okay, I'll just chuck my button or wherever it is. But, um, I believe, I believe, I agree with what you're saying. So, you know, a number of businesses, obviously we've had so many business closures over the last while. And it has been to a certain degree, you know, there's been after COVID, there's been a number of factors involved. But, you know, we're seeing that business struggling, people are struggling at the moment. The cost of affordability of things are so expensive and all time high. We need to alleviate the pressure on business, not add to the pressure. We want our city to thrive and not just survive. So I believe spending 160, but it's actually more. We need to, we allocate that money somewhere else that we actually, as imperative costs for us to spend. So I, I second the fact that, you know, we need to put that on hold. Thank you.
Okay, so 12 questions down and your new order, Neuriden, what box number?
24.
24. Any specific significance of that number? I was gonna say, was it years in New Zealand?
Nope.
That was random.
Yes, next bit. Okay, we've got Z for Zulu. Should, should stay rental homes, uh, as an Airbnb with green flats attached be rated as commercial?
Well, I think it's a bit tricky and, uh, the Airbnb thing is need to be investigated. And at this stage, I'm not convinced if that's gonna make any differences. And that's why I voted the way I did. But in going forward, we need to explore every avenue that we get to make sure we can address the current unaffordable way of rating for our community. Because the Airbnb rating just came at the time as well this year when we discussed, one of the things was just, we're trying to do how we can minimise the rates for our residents. And that is one of the proposals and I don't think so that's gonna address it at this stage. But in the future, we need to look at the different means.
Uh, Paula, what box number?
Okay, let's go into the twenties now. Okay, I'll go for box number 26, thanks.
26. Good old Boxing Day. Yeah, and I've got a, I've got a cousin born on Boxing Day. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've got, was it I for Indigo? What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down without disrupting basic services?
Okay, so we've got like tequila, which is costing us a million dollars at the moment. A month to hold because, you know, uh, there's a number of services. So we've spent, you know, six, five to six million leasing, new art centre and things we could put in areas that actually we've got the space to do it. So I think we need to work the council facilities better. I think I'd put the Golden Mile on hold, I'd exit actually for now and concentrate on other things. So there's another probably 200 million in total there. And I'd look at, I think we're the only city in New Zealand that we are taxpayers and ratepayers are paying for social housing. I know there's an agreement with council and government, but I think the government should take charge on that lead. I know there's, you know, I believe in supporting wraparound services for mental health and, you know, all these poor people that are struggling at the moment and the cost of affordability is out of control. So I do support that, that the fact that they do need support. But I think the government needs to step in and take that back because that is going to be in 10 years, a billion dollars and that's a massive saving for ratepayers and you're getting hit twice with your rates and your taxes. So I think that's very fair to do that. Thank you.
And we have a button from Neuriden.
I think this is, I just really want to make it clear. People who live in city council houses, they do pay rates, they do pay their rates. That is how the council itself, services does the stuff. And the notion that by just giving it to the central government, all the problems will be solved? I don't think so. To begin with, central government, they were not gonna take it away. Two, even if they say, yes, I don't trust them. And this is the community that we need to protect the most. People who live in, I, I myself, when I first came to New Zealand in 2008, I started living in housing. So for me, that was the beginning. I came with nothing to this country. Now I'm raising my kids in this city. And for the future, anyone who comes to this country, we also have the most vulnerable who born here, who are living in the city councils and from the Pacifica community, for them, the Maori community. And they're the kind of community that we want to have and reach and support and not make them panic. In the central government, they don't really care currently from what we see and we need to make sure. And for me, this is actually on top of the priority to fight for those people so they can live dignified life. No one should be worried about where they're gonna stay, where they're gonna sleep, where they're gonna raise their children. And this should be just like red line for everyone in this city. I think we need to make sure the central government, they already said, no, they're not gonna do anything. But the other city, we are doing great, we need to do it even better in supporting our community. This is one of the things I really care for me.
Can I, can I just reiterate too? Like, I believe it's important as well, I'm not saying that it's not. I was just saying the portionment of spending, you know, was the between government thing. But I do believe, I agree that they do need to be supported and even mental health services and things need to be supported, you know, because that is a big thing, you know, so I do believe that as well. It's not that I don't think they should be supported, I do think they should be supported. I just think the, you know, if we can reprioritise our budget, you know, so in that way, things.
Buzzing too many times.
Now, Dawn, you get the next box number as someone who actually does live in council social housing.
If you think so. Now, um, what about 2930, 30 days in every month?
Uh, what box number?
Should I say 30?
Oh, it's too high, but we can do 27.
27 is very good for the alphabet.
Okay, so we'll go for 27. Okay, so we've got M for Mike. Would you support bus stop changes to accommodate new Bendy buses?
Bus stop changes? I say do not commute from other heart and cavity. Cycle lanes, bus stop, lookout, traffic right and left. There's a trouble with, uh, with the, with the cycle lanes, danger, long time. What has changed? What has changed? Uh, keep plastic bags for rubbish, too much glass, council blow away from the tip. They said the plastic bags blow away from the tip. Well, that's simple to collect them at the, at the landfill. There was a famous councillor who didn't do a good job.
Okay, thank you for that, Dawn. Uh, Kevin, what box number?
Number 70.
Uh, yeah, unfortunately that was taken a bit earlier. We've got C.
I'll see that six just remember.
Okay, we've got T for Tiger, since we have one of those that live in Newtown. Should Wellington retain or remove installed cycle lanes?
Okay, my, uh, this, this time I'm standing for the business environment. One, my priority is for the recover business centre parking. Because a business centre need a parking. Business centre is a service centre, retailer centre need a traffic. If we take off all the parking, you look at a city like a ghost city. No people are walking around the street. And for Wellington, uh, city, it's weather is so cold, it's so windy. Not for the senior people or for some people that don't like, uh, take the bicycle. So this means my, uh, point is we need make this city look like a busy, more trafficked on the street. Not only, uh, at the moment, so make the city, uh, so quiet. So look at the so many shops, it's empty. It's, I think it's the cost, uh, by the, uh, people not pass the, your, and the shop. This is my, my point.
Okay, we have bottom from Neuriden.
I think again, I would like to make sure, we are a city of people, we have different people who live a different lifestyle. And what we need is not one or the other. And that is what I did when it comes to Whitefield Park example, where the council proposed a cycle lane. I absolutely supported, but I said zero car park laws and we achieved that. So we can make for our community safe when they want to go to, you know, when the kids want to go to school and if people want to go to work, I think they deserve a safe way to get to, from one place to another. The kids, they deserve to go from home to school and go back to their home as well in a safer way. And saying that, we also need to make sure the notion that some people saying that get rid of car in one night is not practically possible. And that idea in one household of owning five cars is also- And that idea in one household of owning five cars is also the past. We need to make the balance right. We need to serve all our communities, not one or.
And I can certainly need to. I was gonna say you used up your buttons, but I was certainly gonna say I certainly can't pull my one and a half ton coffee cart on the back of an e-bike.
Um, I just feel like places, you're right, certain instances, you've got to take case by case scenario. Um, it's not one size fits all. Um, you've got like outside the hospital when people are getting cancer treatment and they can't access in a southerly, trying to get to the hospital. I believe certain areas outside the hospital should be restored, parking to make it easier for people visiting, those that are sick, dying, those that having treatment and not having to get pneumonia while they're getting treatment for leukaemia or something. So there are certain practicalities we need to take into consideration. Thank you.
Now Paula, we, we have sixteen, is it sixteen questions down? Yeah, I think it's sixteen. Let's get number four. What box number?
Okay, um, I'll go for box number, have we done nine?
Yes, we have.
Okay, then let's go for box number thirteen.
Oh, yes, let's get rid of unlucky thirteen.
It's lucky in Italy.
Oh, is it lucky? Okay, uh, we got V for victory. Oh, you're gonna hate me for this one.
What's that?
It's another cycle lane question. I'm gonna do another executive decision and toss it over because it's unfair you're getting them.
I'm getting all of them.
I know, I know.
They're drawn to me.
Okay, we're gonna end up using E.
Okay.
For elephant. Do we still have one of those at the zoo?
Think so.
How will you restore confidence with ratepayers?
Okay, the way to restore, and I've spoken to obviously to a lot of businesses in the region, both in the city and our wards, you know, obviously Newtown and Rockland, everywhere, all sorts of places. But anyway, so the confidence is at an all time low, as you can imagine with ratepayers. Ratepayers wanna feel like they're getting sensible spend, common sense, pragmatic solutions and getting good bang for their buck, as opposed to feeling like it's the spending's out of control, budget blowouts. You know, where there's quotes, you know, should we have fixed term contracts and things? There's a lot of discussions we can have around this, but generally confidence is at an all time low. Um, ratepayers wanna feel like that, you know, somebody's watching their dollars. And if I was in council, that's a big priority. I think fiscal accountability is a big, big priority for councils, you know, making sensible decisions, practical solutions and consultation with our people. So, you know, ratepayers, you've got three point seven times commercial rates versus the resident, you know, higher than the rest of the country. You've got all sorts of things going on. So we need to actually give them the sense that we actually got, have the confidence in us that we will prioritise, top priority, you know, what core services, top priorities, budgets.
Definitely, you know, your time's well and truly expired.
That's right, yes, that's what we'll do anyway. Thank you.
That's all right. Newerden, what box, oh, you wanna, but okay, you, you've still actually got a button. Yep, go ahead, Kevin.
Yep, uh, I, I wanna add some more. Uh, I think so, uh, for the, for the, uh, for city, I think it's more create business, more create the job, it will be, city will be getting busy and you've got a very fundamental, uh, income. And your city will be getting, uh, it's a, a big problem will be solved out. If you was the city, uh, uh, getting the close shop or close business going down, job, people, job lost, the job, you, you, uh, you will be find that this city something wrong. But I format, I understand, create more, more small business, create more job. Small business create more job. You know, our Newtown got two, uh, very, I think very success. Why is it now Saturday Newtown market? Why is the Newtown festival? You look at it, that's all the small business people, like people from the farmer, people from the, from lots of handcrafted from made by the home, by the home. So look at the small business, like people like create business, like Chinese people, like Africa, like a lot of country people, like create people. So I think city, now make point, not only talking the big picture, look at the small business. They can create more and more job and make this city more positive and attract the tourists people come to city. Yeah, this is my point.
Hey, Kevin, thank you for promoting Newtown for a virtual market where I sell coffee every Saturday. Okay, Newerden, what box number?
Uh, six.
Six. Oh, no, sorry, that's been taken.
Five.
Yes, that's still there. Okay, well, K for kryptonite. If elected, will you slow down spending on grand projects and prioritise vital infrastructure?
I think what I've been doing this term is an assessment of what I would do if you let me again. And I led to stop the sale of airport share. That is giving to our city a dividend of more than hundred dollar, hundred million dollar. And I mean, that's a share increase. The dividend is about twenty million dollars. So that is, I mean, for ratepayers, it's, it's a gain, otherwise that they will be paying for, for that money. And the second one is, I opposed the subsidisation of the Reading Cinema, the thirty-two million dollars. And I will do that again. I voted against the town hall. I know there are some people who support it, but it is not justifiable the amount of money we spend on that building. Even we have so many community centres all over the city that needs a bit of love as well. So I would make sure every little penny we get from our community, we spend it wisely. And that is what I have been doing this tri name as well. That's what I will continue investing in the most infrastructure that we need, like the water infrastructure.
Okay, Kevin, what box number?
For me?
Yes.
Sixteen?
Yes, we've got sixteen. Yep, good old age, you can get married it with parental consent. Okay, and we've got G, and I hope, do we have a giraffe at the zoo?
Yep.
We do have a giraffe, yes. So you can use all these animal, zoo animal ones when you're in Newtown. Okay, what level of annual rate increases of any do you believe is sustainable over the next three years?
Okay, uh, for me, I always think there's a balance. And financial position is the most important since we need to check. But at the moment, I don't know because I'm, every day I'm do the retail shop. So if I got the job, I will be looking very closely about our city council's financial position. But if I want, still, uh, put my point, if you want to make this city, uh, everything's balanced, we need this city more activity and it's not kill small business. Please, small business is very, very hard to survive. If you, uh, like, like, like a climate environment, small business environment, need business environment support. Look at the, I thirty years ago, I look at my Newtown, we got so many small business and so many dairy shop, so many, uh, and the shop. But now we are small, uh, uh, small business need disappear. So I was, for the next three years, I want says, uh, recover our business centre parking. And, uh, we say just, uh, make this business more friendly for the small, uh, uh, small business. Thank you.
Okay, Don, what box number?
Seventeen regular polygon.
I'm sorry, sorry, seventeen's gone.
Shall we try eighteen?
Uh, certainly we can do the voting age of eighteen. Okay, we've got P for Pi Kaua Kaua. Should Wellington start household food waste collection?
Household food waste collection. What I want is to keep the plastic bags for rubbish. And there's too much glass, broken glass on the footpath. And maybe dogs, too many dogs on the footpath, they make a mess and they don't pick it up. Council blow away from the tip, the plastic bags blow away from the tip, recycle. Uh, do they send it overseas? Do not, uh, do not buy rubbish, do not buy rubbish. I like, I like the simply musically, natural grapes and avocado is quite nice. Shops are very bad for unripe fruit. And they throw away an old mattress and the mattress is used for stuffing. And the battery is toxic. Okay, there's some answers.
As long as they don't use the stuffing with the, for the roast chicken, they've paid a mattress. Sorry, that was the first thing when you said stuffing, it made me think of, uh, you know, you don't, you want to use a mattress as your stuffing on your roast chicken. Yeah, okay. Uh, we haven't got any more time to give more box questions, so we're gonna sit there and take a break and then we'll be back for hard hitting questions.
The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. If there's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. Oh, 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 oh. There's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab the snack you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. Oh, 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 oh. There's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab the snack you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The stages set the lights up bright, candidates ready for the fight. Voices love and hate, they stand, who will lead this far plan? Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth or lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Who you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates, it heated right or wrong. They paint the town with visions bold, who will rise to a fold? Shadows blame your truth, or spend a battle ages from within. One by one, they speak their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand. The future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny. Who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see.
And welcome back to It's in the Ballot. Now let's get ready for hard hitting questions. The button cards, bye bye, there's a fair cards because every candidate's got to answer the hard hitting question. So let's get off to hard hitting question number one. Uh, Wellington's carbon goals are set to cut emissions by 57% by 2030. What is the single biggest action you'd take to achieve this in the next five years? Nurodun, you get to go first.
Well, I think decarbonization of our swimming pools.
Do that short, sharp and sweet. Uh, Kevin.
And I'm not can tell you exactly what's a, uh, number. But I tell you, I saw all the things for the, for the environment. I talking today, I'm talking more talking about the business environment. But this environment, we need realistic, I can't use the ideological for, for the environment. So if our country economy getting worse and slow down, we should be drop our standard as well. Like before we set up too high level, it's not, sometimes it's not feeling the working. So I think we still think make a good judgment for this figure, this is my question.
Okay, Don.
Don, Don McDonald. Um, the planet is ruined, the planet is ruined. Uh, people don't care. The government doesn't take any action. There should be half the number of cars, a quarter of the number of planes, half the population. There's too many people that are putting demands on the planet, which cannot sustain it. Too much noise and concerts and movies and insanity and no gamble, gambling and stealing. The poor people are paying out a lot of money and getting nothing back. Uh, a carbon goal, well, carbon is carbon 12, carbon 12. It's part of the chemistry. But it means carbon dioxide, it affects the heating, but, but it affects the greenhouse. So the answer is why, why have you got cars? You shouldn't have cars, half the number of cars.
Okay, Paula.
Okay, so I believe, you know, and of course being sustainable, but not at the cost of business as well. So I think you can have green roofs, you can have a more solar paneling. There's ways to work smarter without cutting down, you know, transportation for people that need to sort of access business or people being productive as well. We, we can be sustainable and a lot, in fact, a lot of banks and things have implemented sustainability in their, um, protocols and everything. So, you know, I think green roof spaces, um, having solar paneling, having trees planted in certain areas. You know, planting on the outskirts, you know, working smarter about, you know, obviously recyclable goods and having plants where we can actually make money out of the plastics and exporting and things like that. And contributing in that way without being single minded about cycleways versus cars. Cause everyone's got the right to access their city. Thank you.
Okay, let's get on to hard hitting question number two. Should Wellington introduce a super council structure to better manage infrastructure and finances? Um, I'm sure if that's meant to be a unitary authority or just a merger of councils, but let's, uh, let, let's see how that goes. This is how the question was submitted. Paula.
Okay, so I think we've got a lot of issues to sort out before we ever make that decision to get a super council. Because, you know, on a case by case, some councils are running more efficiently than others. I think we need to, you know, and, um, certain people like Narodan, other people have worked hard to get the good results for us. But then we've had other issues going on alongside all this. So, you know, I think what we need to do is concentrate on getting our city running like a squeaky sort of, not a squeaky wheel, but an oiled wheel. And once we've had that running properly, then we, we kind of look at addressing something like this now once. Cause it's all about how spend, our debt, our budgets and getting things together to work efficiently for our city. Thanks.
And, uh, there is some 1540 wheel in my car to, to get, to help lubricate the squeaky wheel.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Uh, Narodan.
Look, I came from, uh, as I told you, from Africa, Ethiopia, and we have a great city here. I'm telling you, Wellington is the most beautiful city in the world. We have a lot of things. We have problem, a bit of issue that we need to be addressing. And, um, when you look at it, the population of Wellington, Loharhat and Pararua, we are too small to have very different councils. I think it is a time to have a discussion about amalgamation. I think that is the way also we can address personally, I think the rates issue as well. Uh, currently Wellingtonians pay for a lot of services that we provide. And there are people outside of the city who come to the city, use those services as well. And we need to balance, we need to look at those kinds of things. And, uh, it is time to have that discussion. If I got elected, I will be advocating in 2028, there will be, um, a referendum. And, uh, the city will have a say and depending on that, we will move forward.
I think you've just summed up when I lived in Levin and used to drive the walk away to catch Greater Wellington Regionals trains. Back in the, back in the day. Um, Kevin.
Uh, yeah, I agree. Uh, as you say, it's, uh, compared to another country, um, that, uh, Ethiopia or China, uh, New Zealand's population is quite small and, uh, Wellington, uh, 400, around 400,000, uh, population. But I think so our government is getting big than another country. So I think it's a great Wellington, uh, this is if we want to work in more, last issue is should be much similar. We don't need like, uh, some issue should be the working together, make a one government together. So, uh, we use the, uh, our more financial resource to solve out the similar problem. So we can, uh, about our, spend our, uh, 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 government budget for the human resource. But another thing is for the new tech technology, uh, also internet, all of this, uh, AI. So we still, we think of your great Wellington, we can make all of sense, uh, similar, uh, administrations, uh, staff to working together. So I think a great thing that, uh, Wellington should be the getting more concentrated for the, yeah.
Okay, Don.
Um, the local government is not democracy, not, not very democratic. Um, okay, uh, the post ban the candidate ads, our truth, the whole truth is lies. I advertise in New Zealand Herald and Wellington Regional Council, Wellington Regional News every week. Now it's all gossip, uh, they didn't listen to my campaign. The newspaper makes up old stories, they don't listen to my campaign. My campaign is a calendar, my campaign is the, um, is the phone allowance, the communication allowance, talk, text data for 16 years plus. So, um, these are my policies and if you have to, if you have a policy, you have to become a candidate so you can speak up. Uh, it's not a good government, uh, they, they don't, they don't care about different opinions. Thank you.
Okay, and let's get on to hard hitting question number three. What is your position of retaining Wellington City Councils to Fanganui, Atara, Maori Ward and Greater Wellington Regional Councils to Iupuko, Ituika, Amawi, Maori constituency? And why do you hold those views? Kevin.
Okay, um, put, uh, I'm, I'm personally, I very respect the Maori, uh, the, the people. So I think it's a, uh, so, uh, so it's very important because we should be keeping Maori culture, uh, Maori, uh, the, uh, the, uh, things. So I, well, I'm the, uh, been in New Zealand 30 years, 35 years. I'm, I'm thinking I'm a hundred percent New Zealander. So in the New Zealand, you saw, uh, everyone should be the equal, uh, and we, uh, we respect each other. We, it's on a lot of people, uh, married, uh, different group people like Maori, Chinese or the European, whatever, Chinese or Maori. So, and for the long, uh, uh, time, maybe a hundred years, maybe the whole country will be same, the one we all call well, New Zealand. So because of, we are combined of the culture and we are together, uh, we are, it's, uh, at the moment, the new town, I think so very international. But I think we all work in, uh, the, uh, the culture well together. So one day, I think this is my dream, we all want, uh, just the one, uh, uh, we call our New Zealand. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Narodan.
Um, look, I'm here because of Treaty of Waitangi. And as an immigrant, I do acknowledge that and the people of the land. And I have the privilege of working the Maori Ward councillor, uh, actually Winera, Nico Winera. And the thinking of the Maori people are actually something that we need around that table. It's also acknowledgement of the Treaty of Waitangi. And we have a long term plan around council example for 10 years. But the worldview of the Maori people, having them around that table and sharing that 100 year views of how we can address certain issues that we have. It is actually necessary and we are having this discussion itself. For me, it's we just got our priority wrong. And we shouldn't be discussing having one councillor representing a Maori ward out of 16 or 15 councillors. So I absolutely support it and we should have it and we shouldn't even be debating about it.
Okay, Don.
Donald McDonald Newtown, Newtown waiting, Parkiaha stole the land. So maybe the Parkiaha should give the land back and the chiefs become very rich. And, uh, the Maori ward, uh, the census decides which role you want to vote for. And, um, what's this? Count the resources you want. If you take part in the census, you, you tell how many children you've got, what diseases, what illness you've got. And they give you the resource, but the best thing is to be counted in the census. Uh, the census is going to be dropped because people don't want to do it. But that's how you, that's the best one, it's a, it's a survey that says the people need schools, cars, no, things like that. So the census is important for resources and planning, planning, how many people are going to be? They say there's going to be 80,000 people. Well, that's just a dream, that's just a dream. Thank you, that's a good time.
Okay, Paula.
Okay, I believe, you know, to be mindful and respectful of the Maori culture, there's some very beautiful aspects of the culture. Um, however, I also believe when you're all New Zealanders and, you know, I think it's, it is democracy and, you know, for, we shouldn't be sort of isolating one group over another. And I think we should all have equal sort of voting rights. I think if we start segregating, you have a Maori ward, then in 50 years' time, if there's a big Chinese community, do we, do we then have a Chinese ward? I know the Maori people, they're the people of the land. We do have already Iwi representation around the table and council, which I think is great. Um, but then to go and extend that, I think it starts confusing everything. And I just like to keep it simple, we're elected members, elected, we're all New Zealanders. We respect the culture and we love the culture and that's the heritage of this country. And it's very important, but I think we all have that same equal playing field. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's it for hard hitting questions. Let's time to get to closing statements. I get your one minute of why you should get the Poki, uh, no, no, wrong word, one. Haikawa Kawa, Southern Ward, first preference votes. Um, Narodan, you get to go first.
Uh, Kirolafano, as I said three years ago, I have told you why you should vote for me. And now I'll tell you what I have done on behalf of you and the why I still deserve your number one. And from the day I was elected on, only a couple of months into the job. And there is a media release saying that council will not be doing a review to the affordable sport. During campaign, I promised to do affordable sport review like many other councillors. When I found out that, I just asked to everyone, I said, this is not acceptable. I move a note of motion, I spoke with the mayor, including the mayor who signed the note of motion. We forced the council to do what we told them, which is reviewing affordable sports. And then we achieved that. From there on, after a little while, Wellington City Council proposed to sell Wellington City's share and Wellington Airport. I'm one of the people who led in fighting back and actually winning for the city to keep that airport. Three, the Reading cinema I mentioned, locally in Newtown, I fought for the community, which they have been asking for more than 20 years. Just only for the toilet on Carrara Park, I achieved that. The building will be starting in this January, will be finished mid next year. In Island Bay, I always work on practical issues. People are always fighting, we don't need cycle lane here, we don't want car park here. What I did, there was a vacant land that I proposed for council to make a car park until council found out what to do with that land. In Brooklyn, when we approved about the cycle lane, I proposed about 11 amendments to the cycle lane. While supporting the cycle lane to support the community to have car park, some of the car park to be retained. What we need is a practical way, pragmatic, pragmatic way of achieving for a community that were going to work for everyone. On rates, yes, I did support against some of the cost blowouts. That's why I didn't support the $150 million for the town hall. That is why I just supported an amendment to make it at least up to less than 10% of the rates. For officers to explore the option if we can achieve that. Because I know it's unaffordable for our community, the funding model is broken, the way we, we charging our community is not appropriate. But we don't have any other option because the central government is not also helping local government. It is the central government that should be lifting the series.
I advertise in New Zealand Herald and Wellington Regional Council, Wellington Regional News every week. Now, it's all gossip. They didn't listen to my campaign. The newspaper makes up old stories. They don't listen to my campaign. My campaign is a calendar. My campaign is the uh is the phone allowance, the communication allowance, talk, text data for sixteen years plus. So these are my policies. And if you have to, if you have a policy, you have to become a candidate so you can speak up. It's not a good government. They they don't they don't care about different opinion. Thank you.
Okay, and let's get on to hard hitting question number three. What is your position of retaining Wellington City Councils to Fanganui Atara Maori Ward and Greater Wellington Regional Councils to Iupuko Itaika Amawi Maori constituency? And why do you hold those views? Kevin.
Okay, I'm put I'm I'm personally, I very respect the Maori people. So I think so, so it's very important because we should be keeping Maori culture. More uh the uh the things. So I, well, I'm the been in New Zealand thirty years, thirty five years. I'm I'm think I'm a hundred percent New Zealander. So in the New Zealand, you saw everyone should be the equal. And we uh we respect each other. We saw a lot of people marry the different group people like Maori, Chinese or the European or the Chinese or the Maori. So and for the long time, maybe hundred years, maybe the whole country will be same, the one we all call well, New Zealand. So because we are combined of the culture and we are together. We are, it's at the moment, the Newtown, I think, is very international. But I think we all work in the culture well together. So one day, I think this is my dream, we all want just the one uh we call our New Zealand. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Nurd.
Look, I'm here because of Treaty of Waitangi. And as an immigrant, I do acknowledge that and the people of the land. And I have the privilege of working the Maori Ward councillor, actually Winera, Nico Winera. And the thinking of the Maori people are actually something that we need around that table. It's also acknowledgement of the Treaty of Waitangi. And we have a long term plan around council example for ten years. But the world view of the Maori people, having them around that table and sharing that one hundred year views of how we can address certain issues that we have. It is actually necessary. And we are having this discussion itself. For me, it's we just got our priority wrong. And we shouldn't be discussing having one councillor representing a Maori ward out of sixteen or fifteen councillors. So I absolutely support it and we should have it and we shouldn't even be debating about it.
Okay, Don.
Donald McDonald Newtown and Don waiting, McDonon waiting. Pakihar stole the land. So maybe the Pakihar should give the land back and the chiefs become very rich. And the Maori ward, the census decides which role you want to vote for. And what's this? Count the resources you want. If you take part in the census, you you tell how many children you've got, what diseases, what illness you've got. And they give you the resource, but the best thing is to be counted in the census. The census is going to be dropped because people don't want to do it. But that's how you, that's the best one. It's a it's a survey that says the people need schools, cars, no, things like that. So the census is important for resources and planning, planning. How many people are going to be? They say there's going to be eighty thousand people. Well, that's just a dream. That's just a dream. Thank you. That's a good time.
Okay, Paula.
Okay, I believe, you know, to be mindful and respectful of the Maori culture, there's some very beautiful aspects of the culture. However, I also believe when you're all New Zealanders and, you know, I think it's it is democracy and, you know, for they should, we shouldn't be sort of isolating one group over another. And I think we should all have equal sort of voting rights. I think if we start segregating, you have a Maori ward, then in fifty years' time, if there's a big Chinese community, do we then have a Chinese ward? I know the Maori people, the other people of the land, we do have already Iwi representation around the table and council, which I think is great. But then to go and extend that, I think it starts confusing everything. And I just like to keep it simple. We're elected members, elected, we're all New Zealanders. We respect the culture and we love the culture and that's the heritage of this country. And it's very important. But I think we all have that same equal playing field. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's it for hard hitting questions. Let's time to get to closing statements. I get your one minute of why you should get the Pukie, no, wrong word, one. Paikawakawa Southern Ward, first preference votes. Um Nurd, you get to go first.
Kiurafano, as I said three years ago, I have told you why you should vote for me. And now I'll tell you what I have done on behalf of you and the why I still deserve your number one. And from the day I was elected on, only a couple of months into the job, and there is a media release saying that council will not be doing a review to the affordable sport. During campaign, I promised to do affordable sport review like many other councillors. When I found out that, I just asked to everyone, I said, this is not acceptable. I move a note of motion, I spoke with the mayor, including the mayor who signed the note of motion. We forced the council to do what we told them, which is reviewing affordable sports. And then we achieved that. From there on, after a little while, Wellington City Council proposed to sell Wellington City's share and Wellington Airport. I'm one of the people who led in fighting back and actually winning for the city to keep that airport. Three, the reading cinema I mentioned, locally in Newtown, I fought for the community, which they have been asking for more than twenty years, just only for the toilet on Karara Park. I achieved that. The building will be starting in this January, will be finished mid next year. In Island Bay, I always work on practical issues. People are always fighting, we don't need cycle lane here, we don't want car park here. What I did, there was a vacant land that I proposed for council to make a car park until council found out what to do with that land. In Brooklyn, when we approved about the cycle lane, I proposed about eleven amendments to the cycle lane while supporting the cycle lane to support the community to have car park, some of the car park to be retained. What we need is a practical way, pragmatic way of achieving for community, what gonna work for everyone. On rates, yes, I did support against some of the cost blowouts. That's why I didn't support the one hundred fifty million dollar for the town hall. That is why I just supported an amendment to make it at least up to less than ten percent of the rates for officers to explore the option if we can achieve that. Because I know it's unaffordable for our community, the funding model is broken, the way we we charging our community is not appropriate. But we don't have any other option because the central government is not also helping local government. It is the central government that should be lifting the series and currently I think that they are failing us. So for me, if you give me your number one, I'll continue doing, I'll continue listening to you, continue to be your voice to work for you, not for anyone else.
Okay, next up, Kevin.
Yeah, hi, my name is Kevin, Kevin Singh. I'm standing for the business environment. I'm still for the business environment. So my priority, because my business based in Newtown. So I, my priority was I want a police office set up in Newtown again. Many years ago, police officer got set up in Newtown. This is a very good office in Newtown because lots of small problem that's happened, we can straight away to report to the police office. This police office is not a police state in there. Without community, voluntary people can stay there. We walking with the police together. So that means we not spend the police the resource, we support the police. So everyone now in Newtown getting lots of homeless, lots of people need help, mental problem. And some people that want to help, but they don't know how to do that. You know, the people working around the street, I got abused, I got some people, a woman that don't, very feeling. And like me, English is second language, very hard to call one 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 sometime, even report to one oh five. I think as a police, this two system, sometimes totally very hard for, like me, English is second language. So police office come Newtown will be very useful for the Newtown's business, small business. And it's very good for the Newtown resident. A second one, I still bring the car park to the business centre. Business centre is a service centre, need the people to come down to do some service, like a lawyer office. Not Newtown, before got a bank, but no bank around Newtown. This means we lost the service. We only got at the moment support our business, it's hospital. We got lots so many people come to hospital to support our Newtown business. So this means we lost the last shot, the service. Like some law office, they shift to the library or shift to Pirorua, whatever. Because people find it, oh, it's easy to park in there. But Newtown, Wellington, that's a business centre. Build up a city centre, more than hundred years. And you look at so many shop and it's so hard to survive. Yeah.
Majorly over on time, but all good, good finish up. Okay, Paula.
Okay, so basically a vote for me is a vote for you. I want to represent our communities. I want to listen to our communities. I have excellent negotiating skills, being one of Wellington's successful real estate agents. And I've also got a pragmatic business approach. I ran eighty five staff at a hotel that I used to manage. I used to work at BNZ Finance. I've also been involved in sales marketing. So I speak to a number of people every day. I'm born and bred in Island Bay. So I've spoken to all the issues about the business community. And, you know, everybody, there seem to be a diverse range of issues, of course, going on from, you know, the costs, the excessive costs, the unaffordability of Wellington. You know, are the are the cycleways a great design? You know, how can we work better with our communities? How can we engage more with our communities? How do we represent people better? And so I have a very good pragmatic business approach. Also, you know, and I want to work as a team with everyone to get the desired result for you. I believe in more democracy, less bureaucracy around the table and transparency, consultation. And I believe that, you know, listening to our communities, you know, what you would need and require is foremost in front of my mind. Along with how we can basically get the council back operating and and people feeling positive about the city. I want a vibrant city again, bringing events here, cleaner, safer streets. You know, and it's not a two minute job, I understand that. But, you know, working together to get the desired result with my fellow councillors, we could achieve that. So, you know, a vote for me is I can guarantee you, I'm passionate, I'm a fighter. I'll stand up for what you need and what you want and what I believe, and I'll do the right thing by you. Thank you.
Okay, Don.
Hello about Donald McDonald Talka Wingora or Mac Dun Waiting. Please vote Donald Mayor, Wellington and Southern Ward General. The Bible says ending times is here. Go to heaven if I do the God commands. Jesus is coming soon. You might get his reward, my strength. I am zero honest like everyone. The councillors minds a million. The next council will equal me. I am expert, compare large numbers. Describe details. Let's face it, society government is all about greedy meat. Houses and cars, gambling and alcohol, the time waster. Noisy means you can't hear, you lose your hearing. Communities, I stand for log job. Fix answer, do the right, honest, timely, succinct. They don't do that. Proper sign off. They do nothing. They say it's resolved, but they didn't do anything. And you ask, you ask efficient information, they refuse. I've been a candidate eight times about, never clear answer. Council never clear answer, refuse. Donald, straight talk. Don't just give us done because they don't do the jobs. The challenges population, petrol cars and electric, all in. The roads will be wipeout pedestrians. Phone allowance for age sixteen, reasonable, talk, text data, participate. The calendar is stupid, we know that. So is he for our child. Donald, five weeks time, six days, you work four days. Easier, thirty days. Appointments is easier because anyway, help enough to live on. You don't need enough to live on, Samaritan and community centres, good library, community centre, carry on. Update, the last great disaster, earthquake, like everyone, can't do better. Stick with me, stick with me. One short page. And congratulations to the timekeeper, they haven't got, they haven't got a watch, they don't know, they don't know what time is. But we know if they're fair, we know if they're fair because the rules, there was no rules for this meeting.
Yes, there were. You don't want Zulu Kilo Papa India Gulf landing at Wellington Airport very soon. And for those who are wondering, as anyone would know, that's a flying pig. A New Zealand registered flying pig. Just, just for those who know about that. Okay, I'd like to, was it get a little bit of housekeeping before we sit there and go. When it comes to voting in the Paikawakawa Southern Ward, we use the voting system, single transferable vote. So remember, it's not just your number one vote that's going to be the impactful part, but you also got to look at where your number twos, your number threes, your number fours, your number fives. And you can go up to number six, because we have six candidates. Go, because that will end up making up who will become the two top people at the job. In order for a candidate to meet the quota, they have to get the, was it the number of positions available plus one divided by the total number of votes, equivalent of about thirty four percent of the votes plus one. So in order to have the two candidates to sit on the council, that's the vote that they would between first preference votes and redistributed votes will get on to the top there. I have to say, I have some very good confidence. I, when it comes to voting here, I'm a lot happier than probably what I was before the show. And I personally do have confidence on how to distribute my preferences this election. Also, I'd like to mention that It's in the Ballot Productions is an independent nonprofit organisation. We are funded on small dollar donations, so every little bit sits there and comes and helps to run both this show, the Pukahina Lampoon Award Show and the planned but cancelled to Fanganui Atara Maori Ward Show has cost us today a venue hire of eight hundred and forty five dollars twenty five. We also have spent fourteen dollars today on Starlink internet connection to broadcast the show and thirty one dollars on our restreaming. Now, I live in Newtown, so I haven't put in a claim, I'm not going to be claiming my fuel allowance in here, but Nick's was it, has a budget of a hundred dollars for fuel here and fifty dollars for refreshments for the crew, which have to be honest, tonight we went to, we got Basin Odo House delivered. If you're in there, I do know it sits on the boundary, but yes, Basin Odo House, very good place to go. And I hope they could sit there and also sponsor the show. If you'd like to sit there and put in a donation or was it Koha and to helping run It's in the Ballot, you can head to our website, it'sintheballot.nz and click on donations and they will give us a Kiwibank banking account number. You can also go onto Eventbrite and get, choose the option of Koha without admission ticket option and directly put funds in that way. And you can also do that with Afterpay. But Don here might say that's not a good idea. Yeah, and also you can get head to our Give a Little page and place a donation on there. And also if you're watching online on YouTube, if you're watching live, you can do a super chat and sit there and do it. Or if you're not watching live, you can use a super thanks. And all that little bits and pieces there will go and sit there and help us fund these It's in the Ballot shows who will be useful now for the audience and the people watching now live, but also be useful to those who have yet to come across our content but may stumble across us between now and election day to help decide how to rank their votes. I'd like to thank the candidates for coming tonight. It's not easy to put yourself in front of a video camera, but you did a good job. Our audience for being loyal and staying to the end. It's, you know, thank you for showing support. I know it's on the small end. Our online audience is definitely a lot larger. And also like to thank our crew, Nick, who's on set with me and hosted Pukahina Lampoon Ward. Also like to thank Laura for doing the remote editing and Stacy for doing the graphics. And also like to thank Andre Philenius, the camera gear, to help make this all work as it's not just my equipment here. We all chip in in different ways. And and also for all the other members of the It's in the Ballot team that have been able to do the little bits in the background. Carol for helping doing the social media, for Helen who's been getting the questions up and done. So it takes that job off me before doing run sheets. It does make its big difference. Tomorrow, we'll be joining with, was it three PM for the Parapormi Community Board Show at Capiti Impact Hub at four PM, Parapormi General Ward. And at five PM, the Kapiti Coast District Council Merit Debate, where we'll see who will end up with the who should get the vote to hold the Merit Change for the Kapiti Coast District Council. And it looks like we're going to be for a nearly full house tomorrow of candidates. Now, before I go, I want a bit of a fluff question. If you're going to come to my coffee car, I've been here at Newtown Market, which is very achievable for a change. Most of the time, these candidates are halfway up the country. And you'll come to order a coffee, what type of coffee would it be? Don.
I'm actually drinking tea bags. One, one packet lasts me a month. So I sometimes have coffee, I sometimes have coffee in the jar. It's about ten dollars a jar. So.
You're, you're, you're speaking blasphemy here, Don. You never say that to a barista you like instant.
Thank you. Well, pay for the refreshment.
And Nurd.
Maybe it's unusual for Ethiopia not to be a big copy, coffee fan. As you know, coffee started in Ethiopia and the place started is called Kafa. And actually, some people say that's where the name coffee itself came from. And well, I often drink, when I, I just came to your place a few times and latte was too sugar, you know, a bit of sweet, I know. But there you go. But you've got a good coffee, you make a good coffee and I like it and I just I ask everyone to just actually come and join you on Saturday market. And thank you for hosting us today and really appreciate it.
Paula.
Okay, so I also come from a coffee, a country, my background, Italians have about eight, ten espressos every day. I'd have to say a good espresso, a strong espresso, you know, so to come along and have that there. But, you know, I also want to say thank you so much for hosting us and it's been a pleasure to take part and, you know, enjoy the company of my fellow, you know, candidates as well, because it is, it is, it isn't easy putting yourselves out here. So, you know, fantastic job by everybody and listening to everyone's point of view. Because I think it's so important that we all have, you know, differing views and we can come together and discuss this, you know. So that's really good and a respectful way too. Thank you. So thanks for hosting us. Thank you.
Hey Kevin.
Thank you. I've been your coffee. So you know, at the same time, I open a shop.
I know, I know, we're both, we're both at the crack of dawn.
By the one that, yep. Another two weeks, I'll be able to come to the market.
No problem. You'll have Raylene railing on the counter because she'll be running it while I'll be up in the bay of plenty in the white, you know.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, thank you very much. You guys gave us this platform and we can feast to the whole community and bring our voice to the city council. And I think I'm the one of the feeling suffer the as a business. So this is why I'm standing as, I don't think so lots of people can stand for the small business. So I'm trying to stand for ourselves. So thank you very much, give us this opportunity. And we're making all balance. We will know some people working classes, people maybe different with the business, the small business. So but anyway, but we need a balance for the, for the economy and for the, our society. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think it's time to hit the closing credits.